Good morning, everyone. I welcome you here and call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System. We appreciate everyone's interest in this meeting and the issues and work of the Alabama Community College System. And we appreciate the participation of all our staff, support of our staff and Chancellor and all the board members participating by Zoom during this COVID-19 period. At this time, I will recognize Dr. Matt O'Reilly, who's pastor of Hopeful United Methodist Church. He has several outstanding things on his resume that I'll read briefly, and forgive me, Pastor, for embarrassing you like this, but I think these are significant. Pastor O'Reilly is a fellow of the Center for Pastor Theologians and Director of Research at the Wesley Biblical Seminary, where he leads a doctoral program and teaches New Testament, preaching, and pastoral ministry. He has been a two-time recipient of the John Stock Award for Pastoral Engagement, and he has authored three books, Fall and the Resurrected Body, The Letters to the Thessalonians, and Bless the Nations. Welcome Pastor O'Reilly, and you have the floor, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thompson. It's a joy to be with you all and an honor. Thanks for the invitation to sit in for a few minutes at the beginning of your meeting. And I wanted to just, before I pray, let you know that I was reflecting this morning a bit on Ephesians, Chapter 6, Verse 9, which may be familiar to you. It says, "Let us not become weary in doing good, for at the proper time we will reap a harvest if we do not give up." And as I was thinking about what to say to educators in 2020, a year, we might remember this as a year of weariness. I think we have all experienced a significant amount adversity, to say the least, and you all feel that. The very fact that you're meeting on Zoom instead of in person, I imagine, probably reflects some of that. We all learned about Zoom fatigue this year, didn't we? And how virtual meetings can create unique challenges for all of us. And so my encouragement to you in this season, as we near the end of this year and see what the next year has for us, is not to be overtaken by the weariness. Don't become weary in the good work that you do. I think we all share agreement that education is crucial, and the work that you do in the community college system in Alabama is significant for our state and for our country. I'm sure I can imagine the challenges you face this year in learning how to lead ACC in a global crisis, and I can imagine that that can be overwhelming at times. And I want to offer you some encouragement to keep up the fight. Fight the good fight, and don't be overtaken by the challenges. And know that you'll reap the harvest when the time comes at an appropriate time. So with that, let me pray for you. My Godfather, we are grateful for your goodness, your kindness, your graciousness to us. We're grateful for the way that you show your perfect love to us in so many ways, and most importantly and significantly, and beautifully, in the self-giving love of our Lord Jesus Christ with His death and with His resurrection. We give thanks that He has done the work to reconcile to you, a people called by your name, and that you and your graciousness have sent your Spirit to dwell within your people, to unify your people, to empower your people for ministry in your name. So we're grateful for these things that you've made yourself known, and that you've made yourself known as a God of self-giving love. My prayer for this board today is that they will know your strength and your presence as they do their work. I pray for the students in the college system over which they have authority and to which has been entrusted to their care. I want you to allow those students to benefit from the wisdom that they employ in the meeting that they're in today. I want you to allow them to be discerning as they make decisions, as they face the challenges that come with this year, the unique challenges. Give them wisdom and a sense of your guidance in the presence of your Spirit as they do their work. We give thanks for these things and pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. If everyone, we have a flag in the Chancellor's conference room, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You please call the row.
Good morning, board. Mr. Al Thompson.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Miss Susan Foy.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Matthew Woods.
Present.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Present.
Mr. Jeff Newman.
Present.
Governor Kay Ivey. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Hibley. Section 4 is the approval of today's agenda. The board members have received this in advance. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the agenda.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote on this. All those in favor of approving today's agenda signify by saying yes.
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 Anyone opposed? Agenda's approved. Section 5, Approval of the Minutes of the October 14, 2020 Meeting. Once again, the board members have received these minutes in advance of today, had a chance to review them. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
A move by Crystal.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a voice vote on the approval of the minutes of the October 14, 2020 Meeting. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Section 6, Public Comment.
No one had signed up.
No one signed up for public comment. Thank you, Ms. Hibley. Section 7, Academic and Student Affairs, Adult Education, Facilities, Fiscal, Information Technology, and Workforce Development. Item 7A1 is a recommendation of the Learning Resource Center renovation at Wallace Community College, Dothen. There is no presentation on this. It was on last month's work session. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? Was it Mr. Woods? Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote on this. Please call the row.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
You're on mute.
You're muted, Susan.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
You're on mute, Chuck.
No, you're not. One more time, Chuck.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item 7A2, Draper Instructional Service Center Mechanical Systems Replacement in Ingram State Technical College. I will recognize Mr. Ed Watley on this item.
Morning, Mr. Thompson, members of the board. This is an item that was not on the work session last month, but after being able to bid this job and conferring with the Facilities Committee, we decided to present it at the meeting this month. If you would, go ahead and advance two slides. We are requesting approval for a project that will allow Ingram State to replace the HVAC units at their Draper Instructional Site. This is a project that is long overdue. The HVAC at that building has been worn out. We've been designing a replacement for the past several months. GMC is the architect on this project. Next slide, please. The general location, again, is the Draper Instructional Site for Ingram State. Next slide. And the building that we are renovating, or the HVAC is being renovated then, is shown in yellow. Next slide, please. We received two bids for this project. The low bid was $578,600, resulting in a total project budget of $770. This will be paid for, if approved by the board, through Ingram State Plant Funds. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board might have about this project.
Any questions?
Go ahead, Chuck.
The Facilities Committee reviewed this and requested that it be brought forward. We didn't see any issues with it about moving it forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Watley? Thank you, Ed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Motion, Chuck.
Second by Milton.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have before us a recommendation for mechanical systems replacement at the Draper Instructional Service Center at Ingram State Technical College. At this time, will you please call the row, Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
You're muted, John, I guess. There you go.
Disappeared.
We may have lost him.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 7A3, allocation of 2021 Industry Certification Initiative Funds for the Alabama Community College System. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Section 8, Executive Legal and Public Information. 8A1 is the meeting and work session scheduled for our board for 2021. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we move to a roll call vote. Ms. Hibley, please call the row.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 8A2 is the first of four policy changes. Some significant work done by the Chancellor and his staff and the Policy Committee chaired by Crystal Brown. It's made up of trustees Susan Foy and Matt Woods. We appreciate your great work on this. Item 8A2 is a recommendation regarding adoption of revised policy 601.04 on harassment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Foy. Ms. Brown, do you have anything to... Feel free to jump in. Y'all did the work on this.
Well, this policy just moves references to sexual harassment, and then later on we'll clarify those references. So, but all four policies have been thoroughly vetted by the Policy Committee. So again, we just thank everybody and the staff included for their work.
Absolutely. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote on the adoption of revised policy 601.04. Ms. Hibley, please call the row.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 8A3, Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Revised Policy 602.02, Posting and Hiring. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion?
Chairman Thompson, this policy just provides clarity for our hiring requirements. So we had a presentation on that last month, and again, fully vetted by the Policy Committee.
Very good. Any discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 8A4, Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Revised Policy 620.02, Employee Complaints. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion?
Just additional clarity, Chairman Thompson, here to this policy, which precedes the policy that's upcoming.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is item 8A5, Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Policy 620.03, Sexual Harassment Complaints. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Brown. Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Foy. Discussion?
Chairman Thompson, this policy aligns our harassment policy to be consistent with the U.S. Department of Education's policy, which we have to do that. And so again, we're just providing clarity to the harassment, sexual harassment policy. So.
Very good. Any further discussion, comments?
Recognize one that may recommend.
Thank you again, Ms. Brown, for great work the Policy Committee has done on all of this and some other policy changes to come.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it very much. At this time, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 8A6, Information Technology Infrastructure Upgrade for Coastal Alabama Community College. This is an item that came straight to the board meeting. Did the Finance Committee review this, Mr. McAnally?
We did. We reviewed this as a request to come straight to the board. We've all looked at it. We had no issue with it. The committee did ask that Ben look at it on behalf of IT from the System Office to ensure that the items being purchased were compliant with other things that we're doing across the system, and he concurred that that is the case, and we recommended to go ahead and have it placed on the agenda for today.
Thank you. Anything from staff on this recommendation?
No, sir.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 8A7 is our general liability insurance for the community college system. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis, the second.
Crystal.
Brown. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything to add to this?
No, sir, other than we are retaining the same coverage as previous years, with this year being a 4% decrease from last year's premium.
Thank you, sir. Anything from the board, any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 8A8, Cyber Liability Insurance for the Alabama Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Please call the row, Ms. Hibley.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is Section 9, Personnel. Anything?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have three recommendations on personnel today, so we're going to need to take each one of those individually and ask for your vote to employ them. I'd like to first introduce Brock Kelly. Brock is with the system currently. He's serving as interim president at LBW, and we've gone through the process, and he has been selected as the recommended person to be the permanent president at LBW. I've asked Nikita, in each one of these cases, to kind of give you a fairly good brief on who, on their background. So Nikita?
Good morning, Chairman Thompson and members of the board. Good morning. Dr. Kelly is a native of Alabama. His career spans just shy of a decade in K-12, where he served in roles such as a principal, special education teacher, and a system-wide behavior specialist. Before joining the Alabama Community College System as the Regional Director of Workforce Development, Dr. Kelly served as the Director of Workforce Development for the Alabama Department of Education. He has extensive experience in creating education-to-industry pipelines. Dr. Kelly earned his doctorate in Adult and Continued Education from Auburn University. He earned his master's and undergraduate degree in collaborative 6 to 12 from Troy University. He is also a graduate of Lurleen B. Wallace Community College.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend Brock Kelly, Dr. Brock Kelly, as president of Lurleen B. Wallace Community College.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the Chancellor's recommendation.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second by Milton.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion?
I don't have a discussion. I might have a comment. I'm very... You were on the committee also, Al. I'm very excited to have Dr. Kelly as the appointee for LBW. I think he's going to do a fantastic job, and the community's already embraced him. Thank you.
I would just echo your sentiments, John. Anything else from the board, any discussion or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Hibley, please call the row.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Susan Foy?
You're on mute, Susan.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Congratulations, President Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, Chancellor Baker, can I say something?
Sure.
Okay. Um, first and foremost, I just want to thank, uh, the board trustees and, and Chancellor Baker for this opportunity, uh, and for the interview panelists who gave their time. This is a humbling experience to be chosen to lead, um, the college where I, I first started my post-secondary education. So this is, this is home to me, and I am, uh, I'm humbled to have this opportunity. I look forward to, to help LBW move forward and serve in our communities, and it's an honor. And I just want to thank you guys for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Brock, and, uh, we've got a lot of work to do. But I, I look forward to you being a part of that leadership there and to, to provide the leadership in the community, to make the college what we think it should be and what you certainly know it should be.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to go forward with the next recommendation. And I believe Joe is with us. I'd like to recommend Joe Whitmore. He's not new to the system. He's been chief financial officer there for some time at Sneed's College. Uh, he's been serving as interim for several months. Uh, he has, uh, demonstrated his commitment to leadership for improvement and growth of Sneed's in the area that's served there. And I'm, I'm excited about rec- recommending him because I'm already convinced that he will do a great job for that community. Nikita?
Mr. Joe Whitmore has served in the public and private sectors in a career that spans thirty-seven years. After ten years in banking administration, Mr. Whitmore made the move to the public sector and higher education administration. He has filled several roles, management of all university auxiliary services, the director of institutional planning and analysis, campus records retention, space analysis, and record organization, capital projects oversight, risk management, and the budget planning and reporting functions. Mr. Whitmore also served embarrassed roles on the SAC CLC steering committee for two onsite accreditation visits. In his appointment as vice president for administration and finance, he has managed the operating budgets to maintain a solid financial base and adequate reserve balances, and completely reformed the long-term debt structure of the college by eliminating a large outstanding balloon note and reinvesting the total debt at a lower rate providing funds to conduct several renovation progress on campus. Mr. Whitmore earned his master's in business administration and a bachelor's in finance from Jacksonville State University. He has completed his coursework for a doctorate in higher education leadership and is waiting to defend his dissertation within the next few weeks. Mr. Whitmore's wife, Janet, also works in higher education as coordinator of the honors program at JSU. They have two married children and two grandchildren.
We have a recommendation before us forward for Mr. Joe Whitmore as the president, the come the pre- permanent president at Sneed State Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Foy. Discussion.
Just a, a comment, Mr. Chairman. I was a part of the interview committee. I thought we had a great, uh, interview process at Sneed. I want to thank everyone who applied and certainly, uh, thankful for the diligent work of the interview committee and our HR department. Mr. Whitmore, in my opinion, has done an excellent job in his role as interim president. He's been working hard in the community, and I'm really excited about the direction that Sneed State's heading, so I fully support this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anything else from the board? Board, we have before us a recommendation from Chancellor Baker for Joe Whitmore to become the Sneed, the permanent president at Sneed State Community College. Ms. Hibley, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, President Whitmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this. Uh, I do want to thank the Chancellor for your confidence in putting me in this, in this role. I appreciate the, the board for affirming that. I'm very, very excited about the things we've got going on here at Sneed. Uh, I, I truly believe that we are poised to do some really great things, uh, to, to look at some areas of growth and, and some program expansion that is, is overdue. And we're really excited to start digging into that and, and making that, those kind of things happen. Again, I'm, I'm very humbled with this role. I understand, uh, the pressures and the responsibilities that come with it. I have assured Chancellor Baker that he'll get my best every day, and I'll let the, the board know that as well. If I could take just a minute, something, uh, on a personal basis, a, a few months ago, when I was first placed in the, the interim role, we had a campus-wide meeting. It was our convocation as we began the fall semester. And I shared with our staff a Bible verse that was very, I felt it was very appropriate then. It's probably even more appropriate now. And that was, uh, First Kings three nine, what says, "Creating me and understanding heart, uh, a discernment for decisions to know right from wrong." And I think that's a, a verse that's even more appropriate now. I think it's something that as leaders, we can, we can all embrace to always be, have that discernment when we're making decisions whether they're big or small or, or whatever they have anything to do with, that we, that we're constantly looking to make sure we're doing the right thing for the college, for the system, uh, and for our students and for the state as a whole. And as we go forward, that's, uh, that will be our mantra here at Sneed. We're looking very forward to, to continuing what we've got started and building on that. And I'm excited to, in the future, be coming before this board with some very exciting, uh, very exciting news and, and growth potential that we may have here. So thank you again, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, is Joel Haygood? Joel?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm here, Chancellor.
Okay. Joel had to be out of state, and I didn't, I, I assumed. We had worked all of this out, and he, fortunately, we have.
Yes, forgive my backdrop, Chancellor. I'm, I'm coming to you from my room at Disney World, so.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to recommend today, Dr. Joel Haygood as president of Bevel College, Community College. Joel has been very active in the community. He's, uh, even been in the public environment as an elected official. But he's been dedicated to improving the community that is served around Bevel. So it's my recommendation that he be employed as the permanent president at Bevel State Community College. Joel Haygood.
Dr. Joel Haygood is a twenty-four-year veteran educator. His career has spanned the full spectrum of K-12. He has served as a classroom teacher, middle school and high school coach, and football, basketball, and baseball, athletic director, and assistant principal, a principal, a district director of curriculum and instruction, and school superintendent. His colleagues honored him recently by selecting him as District Seven Superintendent of the Year. Dr. Haygood earned his doctor in educational lea- leadership from Stanford University. He earned his educational specialist's degree in educational leadership from the University of Alabama, Birmingham. He earned his master's and undergraduate degrees from the University of Alabama. His wife, the former Jennifer Guthrie, is a doctor of pharmacy, who as once was a Bevel State ambassador. They reside in Jasper, Alabama, with their two children, Annalee Eleven and Brett Now, who attend Lupton Elementary and Middle School.
We have before us, board, a recommendation for Dr. Joel Haygood to be the, become the permanent president, Bevel State Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion.
Again, just a, a comment, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to thank Chancellor Baker, the HR department and staff for bringing some good candidates to the interview committee. Uh, again, appreciative of all the candidates, uh, that applied and interest shown for that position at Bevel. And I'm just confident in the Chancellor's recommendation, and I believe that Dr. Haygood will be an effective leader for Bevel State, and many good days ahead for that college.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anything else from the board? We have before us, uh, the Chancellor's recommendation for Dr. Joel Haygood to become the president at Bevel State Community College. Ms. Hibley, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, President Haygood.
Thank you. Uh, Chancellor Baker, if I may say a few words?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to thank you, sir, and the board of trustees for this opportunity and the vote of confidence that you've, you've shown in me. To say that I'm humbled and excited to begin this next chapter in mine and my family's life would just simply be an understatement. So I can't wait to hit the ground running, uh, to work with the wonderful faculty and staff that's in place there at Bevel State, and, uh, make our institution the catalyst for workforce and economic development in our region, not only in our region, but in the state of Alabama. So I just, uh, cannot thank you enough for the opportunity. I, you know, I see this as, Nikita mentioned, twenty-four years. I see this as my last stop. And I plan to be at Bevel State for, for many years to come and, and hopefully bring some stability to that position. I, I think if memory serves, I'll be the fourth president in ten years. So I just really look forward to serving all the communities in the service area. So once again, thank you so much for the opportunity and the vote of confidence, and go Bears.
Thank you, Joel.
Karen. Mr. Chairman, I, my next item. Report and updates. Uh, I've asked Karen if she would, uh, give us kind of an update on IT. We, we've had a lot of things going on in the last several months. We always have. But with Karen's money and the other activities and other things, uh, Ben and Karen have been very busy, I think is an understatement. And, uh, it's reached the point where I even hate to call Ben to my office and say, I need you to do something because I know they're working a tremendous amount of time under a lot of stress. But it's all been for good things, and that's, that's helpful. So if Karen, is Karen, Karen, you on?
I'm here. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, you go ahead.
I will. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chancellor Baker, for giving us this opportunity. I have not given y'all a update in the last few months of just how our ERP projects are going. So I thought I would take this opportunity to give you, you high-level notes on what's been going on. Banner, as you know, has been our major project over the last two years. And I can happily say that all twenty-four institutions and system office are now live in one Banner environment. But that, that alone should get some claps from someone. We've done a financial year-end. Thank you. We've closed out a year financial year-end. We've also had many student processes for fall twenty twenty that have been successfully done. And really, this is all credit to our schools. All of our schools have stepped up in different ways to make sure that this implementation goes as easily as it can be. Now, we all know it was very, very hard work. And Chancellor Baker mentioned how our, our team here at the system office has been working many hours. But I also want to recognize that our schools have been doing the same. So just wanted to give you that good bit of good news. And now that we are on that stable unified ERP environment, we're ready to do a few more projects to continue to unify our system. We're gonna begin with three more implementations in twenty twenty-one for products that will be tied into our Banner ERP system. The first one will be Blackboard Ultra LMS. It's our learning management software, and it will be connected to our Banner environments. Blackboard is gonna allow us twenty-four-hour access for our students across the system. It's gonna provide an online learning tool that is consistent across the board. And that's a, a key component, just as we did with Banner, making sure that we unify our school. Next item we're going to be looking at and, and implementing is HonorLock. It's a tutoring software that is the tool that we'll use to assess our students. It, it's gonna give students greater flexibility and allow us to be able to assess our students in a secure manner. The third item that we're going to be implementing is tutor.com. And this is a tutoring software that will give online, that will give our students consistent support on specific subjects so they can reach out if they need help with math or English or whatever their topic area is. But that, again, will be an online tutoring software. With all these three components, we were, we are going to implement those into our Banner environment. It's seamless, and the interaction will be seamless with the ERP so that the interfaces for all these will be consistent across the board. This will continue to unify our schools so that all these products can be available to all of our students, no matter what school they attend. It is also going to help us streamline business processes and make sure that the administrators that are currently doing a lot of work that is duplicated across the system, they'll be able to now focus more on student support and less on the overhead of administrating software. I did want to take another opportunity to thank all the schools for all the hard work. They, they don't get as much recognition as I would like for them to, especially in this day and age of COVID. But, um, we're gonna continue to support them, just as we've done through the ERP project with these three new initiatives for twenty twenty-one. Thank you for your time.
Anyone have any questions? Ben, kind of remind us of, A, how many laptops we've purchased and distributed?
Well, they are, uh, coming in, but we, uh, purchased ten thousand laptops from Dell, uh, to utilizing CARES Act money to distribute across the state. Uh, the schools purchased those directly, and they've begun arriving at the schools, uh, now. A few laptops had a small issue. Dell's correcting, but they're working better right now. Just kind of finding and allocating ten thousand laptops in a really short window of time.
And then, how many classrooms have we now equipped with?
The, the materials have been delivered onsite to most of the schools, but seventy-three classrooms have been receiving classroom upgrades. And then a total of two hundred and sixty-five conference rooms across the state, being added with video capabilities to support, but it's online instruction, online. Remote learning, remote, uh, meeting needs across the state. So there's a lot of, uh, I don't know, this is all made possible with CARES Act money.
Yeah.
There's a significant amount of work to follow. We're, we're getting close. We've got another month, and we'll be wrapping it up.
Well, the reason I bring that up, that's, I appreciate it. The reason I bring that up, I, I, we, we, at some point. we we at some point, Mr. Chairman and board members, we're going to have to find a way if we have to find a gym big enough, but whatever the case, we're going to have to sit down and start talking about where are we going with the capital funds that have been made available? Some $120 million out of the public school college authority bond issue. And as I traveled around the state and I think by the end of this week, I will have covered all of the colleges, met with their cabinet and the president, talked about some of the priorities of Aspire 2030. And I explained that my first priority is to have every classroom a well-equipped, comfortable classroom that we would be comfortable inviting every student into and certainly equal to or greater than any high school they came from. This is all a part of that. And CARES Act has kind of given us a leg up, I could say, on moving in that direction. But it is an issue that we're going to have to spend some time talking about as as we go forward. And in addition to that, a lot of the common things with the common program that we have is going to allow for a lot of organized management and verification that things are being managed that we just haven't had in the past. And I've asked Olivier Charles if he would kind of brief us on something that will help in the role of student success, student services. And I would tell you, I I sat down with them this week with he and his staff. And for the first time since I've been here, I felt that we had a staff and that a staff that will be equipped in a way that we can look at every school and say, we can help you to improve your recruiting and retention program. We've done a lot of things in relation to that, but I don't think we've ever had a well-organized approach and a follow-up that we will have in the future. So Olivier, if you would talk to us.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Can everybody hear me? Great. All right. Thank you so much. Ezra, if you will launch that that presentation for me. Thank you all. Thank you, Chancellor Baker, Chairman Thompson, members of the board for allowing me a few minutes just to update you on one project that we have been working on for a few months now, over the last couple of months. And it's really based around taking an approach of using, you know, some solid business principles and a customer relationship manager software or CRM software to help enhance the way that we talk to students and the way that we communicate with our students. So we're excited about this project and what it can do. And we're excited about being able to to begin this implementation process pretty soon. So we are in the process of purchasing and eventually implementing a CRM tool, a customer relationship manager tool to help our system. Next slide, please. All right. So rather than read this definition to everyone, the best way that I can explain what a CRM tool is is to say that, you know, when you go on any website and they have this little icon or this little box that you can click and put your email address if you want to receive more information. And then once you do that, that company just emails you to death, or they call you to death, or whatever communication metric you put in, they use that information to continue to communicate with you. Or another example would be when you call AT&amp;T or whoever your cable provider or internet provider is and they ask you for your name and some sort of identifier to figure out who you are and whoever that person is, they're making notes about the conversation while you're having that you're having with them. And what they're doing is they're using those notes for the next conversation that you have so that 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 associate can see what you have spoken to the the previous associate about so that that company can better serve you and kind of find an intuitive way to to keep you engaged and always know what what you need as a customer. So so that's in a nutshell, a CRM. It's a software tool that businesses use to engage their customers, but also interact with their customers in a lot of ways. CRMs have made their way, next slide, please. CRMs have made their way into higher education. And now, to be honest with you, if you don't have a CRM, you're you're behind the times. And about 10 years ago is when this wave started. So I think we're prime right now as a system to purchase a CRM and we're taking advantage of that. You know, the advantage that we have now is that we're taking a system approach to purchasing a CRM rather than an individual approach from each one of our colleges. So as of right now, five of our 24 colleges currently have CRMs. But hopefully by this time next year, all 24 of our colleges will have the same CRM so that we can move forward together as a system. So you know, this tool is going to help us improve our communications with all students throughout the lifecycle. And the best way for me to tell you to think about that is if you think about a prospective student, whether they're an 18-year-old high school student or a 35-year-old mom of three or displaced worker or a student that just finished a GD program, however you want to look at it, there are a prospective student to our one of one of our community colleges. So with this tool, our colleges can talk to those students using emails, text messages, phone calls, postcards, any kind of metric you can think of. We can run mail merges and send letters to those students. We can use any single communication metric that we want to, and we can do it from one system before they enroll. All of our colleges almost right now are doing this, but a lot of them are using it through four or five different tools. So they have to have a contract with Constant Contact or MailChimp and have another contract with a text provider and then have another contract later on for an early alert software. So you know, we're really taking all of those those different pieces of software and putting them into one and really creating a one-stop shop, if you will, for for our colleges to be able to communicate with prospective students. And then once they become current students, we can still continue to talk to them. The messaging will just change. So rather than getting them to enroll, we're more trying to engage them while they're there. So it might be coming to the career center for help with resume. Or it might be scheduling a meeting with their advisor or anything that a current student would need. Or it might be that an instructor set up an early alert because a student's not doing well in the class. So that alert will go to one of the advisors at the college that's assigned to that student. So so we're really, you know, ramping up that communication to help the student. And the last piece is when a student becomes an alumni, when they transition or graduate or get the credential that they're seeking, you know, the college can continue to engage the student however they they so choose. So it might be to just invite them to a basketball game or it might be to to tell them about how another alumni is doing. But just however the college chooses to keep that brand in front of the student. Because as we all know, when our students leave our colleges, they they go on and they have kids and so forth. So we want to stay in front of them as much as we can to engage the whole family. So a system like that is going to change and enhance the way that as a system we and by we, I mean all of our colleges individually communicate to their students. This is a tool that's going to help us with increased application completion. Right now, system-wide, every year about 15,000 students do not complete their application to admission for whatever reason. This tool is going to help us with that because our data shows that if a student can complete an application to one of our colleges, there's a 35% chance that that student can enroll. So you know, that 15,000 students that didn't complete their application, if we can flip those and turn them over, then we can possibly gain an extra 5,000 students system-wide. And the way that the system will do that is rather than emailing a student and just saying, hey, Olivier, complete your application, the message will be a little bit more intuitive and it'll say, hey, Olivier, we noticed that you've completed 65% of your application. You know, in order to complete the other 35%, it will only take you six minutes. So really, a strong and intuitive message that that triggers that student to do an action rather than just letting him know that the application is incomplete. So we're excited about that. These systems can increase retention persistence and overall student success. So we're excited about that. One of the things that I love about a CRM is that now we can track not just interactions with students but interactions with entities. So businesses, if you think about it from a workforce perspective, one of our workforce developers at our colleges can, you know, keep the company that they're speaking to up there because we can create profiles on companies. So if 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 someone at Bishop had a conversation with Airbus, you know, we can create a profile for Airbus and that person can include the notes of each conversation so that when the next developer comes and they see what was the last conversation, they can they can see the notes from the conversation. And we can even include profiles and relate the student back to its entity. So if we decide if we develop the program for Airbus with Bishop or with Coastal, we can actually see that those students that are enrolled are related to that business. And we can do the same thing for high schools and associations, et cetera. So you know, this system will not only track students, but it can also track entities as well. So this is not just a student services or student success tool. It's a campus tool as well. Next slide, Ezra, please. You know, to to follow up to the previous slide and thinking about how a CRM can help our system, some of the things I said are absolutely true. But this thing is going to enhance the way that we communicate to our students throughout the system. The fact that it will be one software, but each college will have their individual account is an advantage to our colleges because it wouldn't help us to create ACCS messaging, but every single college can tailor their messaging to themselves and brand it to them and brand it to their student and build their own communication plan. So this isn't some boxed approach where every college has to do it the same way. I think every college needs to do it the best way that their students collaborate with them. So we're excited about our colleges having some discretion to create their own plans. And of course, the collaborative possibilities of a common system benefit us financially because 24 individual colleges purchasing a CRM is way more expensive than than one collaborative buy, which is what what we're going to do with this process. So and and lastly, and probably my favorite, this system will streamline the training and professional development that we can provide to our people across the system. And what I mean by that is if, you know, typically with systems like this, you know, there's there are annual conferences and trainings and things. But typically, you have to get on a plane and go somewhere across the country to have these trainings. But with all of our colleges under one umbrella with one system, very similarly to what we're doing with Banner and with our LMS, we can scale our own professional development. So I know the presidents would appreciate this one because now now they don't have to to spend so much money on travel because we can create our own conference every year around our CRM where we can bring all of our users together across the system and share what works. You know, and I think that's the best way to learn and evolve from a system like this is for us to start talking about what are some best practices we've developed and learned from each other. So professional development becomes a lot more scalable and a lot less expensive on our colleges as well. And because we will be able to speak one language, we can really make professional development valuable for everyone because no one in the room will will be a stranger to what we're talking about. So our terminology and all of those things become essentially the same while saving, again, a lot of funds. Next slide, please, Ezra. And and so one of the things, oh, not one, but some of the things that I love about a CRM is that the tool can do whatever we needed to do in a sense. So the way that these systems work is is just like any other piece of technology. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that technology is good, but it's only as good as the people behind it. So please rest assured that that our implementation is going to be as thorough as possible. But you know, these systems can can do pretty much whatever we can dream. You know, even managing an event on the recruitment side, you know, if we're having a preview day or just a reception on campus. You know, our our colleges have had to create forms using Google Forms or Microsoft Forms or Teams. And that's great. But now with the system, we can create an event. We can create registrations and we can create communication plans behind it. So if a student signed up for an event next month and they signed up now, we can send them an email each week up until the event and we can set that as automatic. Territory management becomes easier for recruiters. And our colleges can assign recruitment territories however they want, whether they do it by major or by high school or by zip code or whatever. But now the recruiter has their their territory at their fingertips. So as a recruiter, if I was going to a high school in Birmingham, I could send my students a text message right now saying at 1:00 PM, I'll be at your high school. Come by into cafeteria and see me. So now that tool becomes right there at the recruiter's fingertips that they don't have to go through, you know, mundane process just to get something small like communicating to their prospective students out like that. We can track, you know, workforce development opportunities like I just mentioned, you know, by creating those entities and those partnerships, but also those profiles for the businesses. On the advising side or the retention side, an advisor has has the best tool now because now they can see all of their students and all of their caseload all at once. We can schedule appointments within this system. We can we can look at guided pathways reporting. We can even get as deep as creating student alerts. Almost all of our colleges have an early alert system. But our CRM will have one built into it. So what what we'll essentially do is make sure that this system is communicating with our learning management software to see, you know, if Olivier is failing math and I made an F on my midterm, that can trigger an alert to my advisor to reach out to me and offer tutoring or or just some intermittent and intrusive advising before it's too late. And that's typically what happens is a lot of times we reach out to students too late. But the these these software and these systems can actually help us be proactive rather than reactive to a lot of these things. The ability to send one-on-one, unlimited one-on-one, one-to-one text messaging to our students, as you all know, is just the way that our students communicate these days. No matter what age group, traditional, non-traditional, text messages just have a 90-plus percent read rate. So our colleges would have unlimited text messages to be able to send to any student individually or as a group for whatever reason. And we can still do the mass campaigns as well and run mail merge documents. So a very interactive and intuitive tool that can change and really streamline the way that we communicate. Next slide, please, Ezra. All right. In terms of where we are with our process, we are negotiating with some companies right now and having some final discussions. Dr. Neil Scott, our Director of Strategic Enrollment Management, has done an amazing job with this. He is leading our steering committee. We have put a steering committee together of 26 people from across the system. And we have almost every single division represented. We have high-level users such as presidents who might just want to report. We have deans of students on that committee, deans of instruction, marketing officials, recruiters and day-to-day or daily users and directors as well. So it's it's a broad group of people that will be involved in the system that are helping us select this. Our office is not selecting the system. The people in our system are selecting the best system for them. So we're at a good place right now where we're in final negotiations with the company. And we hope to make a recommendation to the chancellor in the coming weeks. Next slide, please. And then after that, we plan to begin an implementation next semester. So I heard Karen Becker say that we are, we have three more implementations starting next year. I think we have four if we count this one. So one of the things again that I want to reiterate is technology is only as good as the people behind it. So one of the things that we are going to make sure of in collaboration with with Ben Rose Brock and Karen Becker and our entire IT team is that we create a governance structure that makes sense and is effective, but we also create an implementation plan that makes sense for each of our colleges as well. We will likely begin implementation maybe in February of 2021, but start in phases, starting with the recruitment platform and then adding the retention advising and then the advancement platform. And that's when we'll be able to speak to alumni and such. So right now, we're at the stage, the final stages of selecting a company. And then we will build out a strong implementation plan. And then starting in February, we hope to identify an implementation plan and begin that process. So again, I want to I want to stress my excitement about a software like this and what it can do for us as a system. Next slide, please, Ezra. And what it can do for us as a system. Because again, we are happy that about five of our colleges have CRMs. And the ones that are using them, I think they all would agree that those systems are highly effective. But our goal is to take what we have or what those colleges have and scale it statewide to give everyone an equal opportunity and level the playing field so that the smallest college in the system has access to the same technologies as the largest colleges in the system. So we're excited. I think our steering committee is excited. The leadership at our colleges are excited about this because they can see how effective a tool like this can be. And I think it puts us on a strong competitive footing with a lot of large schools that are that are, you know, essentially doing a lot to recruit students. So at this time, and I'm sorry for speaking so fast. I was trying to stay within my 10 minutes. But at this time, I would love to take some some questions or comments or reflections from from any of you on the board.
Olivier, great. I was just going to say it's great to see this.
I was just gonna say it's great to see this moving forward, the, the ability to track this stuff is key. And uh, appreciate the efforts of everyone involved.
Thank you.
Sam, I'd like to echo Blake's uh comments as well. I've been using it in business for over twenty years and I mean, it's gonna be key to uh the future success of the system and I just want to commend you and your efforts and your team.
Thank you.
Liv- Olivier, this show.
Yes, sir.
I, I know this will work great. I really appreciate this effort. Especially tying it to the career coaches to get in and out of schools and ever where, will this be able to? Will this be available for other career coach, coaches outside of the ACCS?
Well, we can make it that way. Um, one of the things about this system is that we can create uh portals. So for example, after a student is accepted, we can create an accepted student portal, which is essentially a community uh that students can log into. Uh, as, as far as the career coaches having, you know, username and access to this, we would essentially have to purchase a license for them um and, and get permission from, from their employers. Uh, but I, I would probably be against that just because of the data that, that we would have to expose them to. We would just have to find a way to get them the information that they need um without necessarily buying them a license for the system. So the short answer is yes, we can make it work.
Well, I just, I know there's a group of career coaches outside our system and I just hope we can find a way to interact, interact more.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We absolutely want to do that. And, and, and I, I think you bring a good point up because we can create profiles for those career coaches and keep them in tune and keep them engaged with what the college is doing because they're extension of our colleges. So we want to make sure that they know as much as they need to. So we can actually create communication plans for career coaches, principals, counselors, you know, whoever.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you all so much uh for your time. I hope that this time in a couple of months or, or next year, I can actually provide you with an update on the company that we choose and show you some of the functionality that we have. And, and we're excited about this because I think this puts us on, on a strongly more competitive ground um with a lot of larger entities, colleges that can do this.
Any other questions, discussion? Uh, I guess as a, a word of caution, it's not caution, but we, something we have to deal with. Uh, as we move forward with a lot of these programs, activities, it becomes to some people in the system invasive. Because historically, they've kind of had their own little world. And it may or may not be working. These kinds of software programs and the implementation at least sets a standard so that we can make a judgment are all of our schools doing certain things. And that is never without critics. Uh, you know, we get those love letters all along. And uh, so, so I don't, surely don't think that they think we're gonna just quit. So they can do whatever they want to do. But as we move forward, uh, we have to make some basic decisions. And there is an issue out there today. I'll be honest about it. And there's an issue dealing with the decision that we made. Uh, some folks would have preferred one system, some would have preferred the other system. We ended up going with the system that saved us about two and a half million dollars. Uh, money is an important item in this whole process. So if you have questions or you get calls or comments or whatever, we'll be happy to respond and help you understand what we're doing. But as we go forward, we have some schools that must become more aggressive in recruiting and retention. And because if they don't, I don't know what the future holds for them, but it's not going to be real good. We need to be in the business of recruiting every student that we can possibly get. I, I had a question the other day. Some school had, uh, one of our schools had called and they had a student or a potential, a former student in high school that had a three-point-two grade point average. Lacked a few weeks finishing, and I don't know the reason she didn't finish. And she didn't get a diploma. But she got a certificate. That goes back to several years when they were issuing certificates instead of diplomas if you had some deficiency. So the question became, can we let this student come to our school? Well, that is not a handicapping situation as I see it. Those are the kinds of students we want to get into our schools. We can help them take care of the deficiency they had. And literally today, we can, instead of a G E D, we can work with their high school and they can receive a diploma. And we've worked that through the State Department of Education. So a lot of opportunities that we have to start looking at and not just casually looking at, but in a methodical way so that we know we are doing the job. These tools are designed for that purpose. And as we move forward, uh, occasionally we step on some toes and that's just part of it. We try to include the community of colleges in the decision-making process, but ultimately there has to be a decision. And it won't always be the one that everybody wants. Or if it is that way, I've not experienced many of those occasions. But I appreciate your time. I appreciate your interest in this and it's, it's a step forward at a, at, at a level of organization that has not been kind of thing that a lot of our schools have been accustomed to. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Any committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, I would just add that um, I think with the last um, the report that you heard Ben say, we won't really have any more CARES Act items coming uh before us at this stage of the game. I think most everything is taken care of. Everything else that had to be purchased was below the threshold that was set for contracting and, and purchasing directly. So I, I, we just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us as a committee uh from audit finance to be able to review these things, make recommendations and bring them to the board without going to the work session. It, uh, the plan that was laid out by those in the system office is working and a significant percentage of uh, everything that needed to be bought has been bought. A, 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 a large percentage delivered. And uh, Ben tells me that uh, we're on target uh to get everything done by the state's deadline of mid-December. So just again, I want to give you that update and say thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McAnally, for uh your uh leadership on the finance committee and for the members of the finance committee for the time they've committed to this and the attention to uh working through these items and these requests efficiently and in the best interest of the system. Any other committee reports? Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Uh, our, we will reconvene after adjournment for our work session. Uh, if there's no objections from the board, we'll go straight into the work session. Our next board meeting will be December ninth, twenty-twenty at ten A M. Any comments from the board? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If I oppose, we stand adjourned. Okay, we'll go into the work session. You have before you your agenda. The first two items are, or three items rather, are mission statements. And then after that, in that executive section are three policy changes. Mr. O'Brien?
The, the first item on the work session agenda is Jefferson State Community College's request for review and approval of its current mission statement. Does anyone have any questions regarding that item? The next item on the work session agenda is Wallace State Hansville's request for approval, uh, for review and approval of its uh revised mission statement. Uh, the revision to its mission statement was really only to change it one word. Uh, does anyone have any, any questions regarding this item? The next item is Jake's, Drake's, Drake State's request for review and approval of its revised mission, mission statement. Any questions regarding this item? The next item uh is the uh re- recommendation regarding the adoption of proposed policy two-two-three-point-oh-one relating to information security. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that, that the policies that we're going to be reviewing have been thoroughly vetted by the policy committee and we spent um time with um uh, Mr. Roger Bates and um other system office staff uh in review and um and uh I think that Mr. Bates and his staff will be uh discussing um the policies with us.
Yes.
Brown, I can address this one for you very briefly. I think we discussed this in all of the uh briefings. But this policy is very general and, and broad in its statement. The devil is in the details, of course. And I think you all have provided a copy of a very detailed document, near seventy pages in length, which are the real nuts and bolts of this. But I think in hearing all this discussion about the technology update you heard already today, you understand now maybe better than ever the volume of data that we're now uh using and have some uh influence over with regard to all these software programs. And that data is shifted and moved and available throughout the system. And so we talked a while back about the formation of the Information Security Office. And this policy will in effect allow that to go forward with guidelines, processes and procedures that the chancellor will oversee and implement uh through the I T professionals and any other outside help that's desired and needed. Uh, the, the essential first draft uh, uh implemented policy to guidelines to implement this policy is set forth in the longer document. And I will not go through all of that in detail. Suffice it to say that that will be the, the bible. That'll be the guiding book for this policy and how our system treats and protects uh data security going forward.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, any questions on that policy two-two-three-oh-one? Item five, two-two-four-point-oh-one.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have uh Christine Hart uh on the line to discuss this uh or answer any questions relating to this proposed new policy.
Good morning. This is Christine Hart. Um, the creation of board policy two-two-four-point-zero-one expressive activities by the campus community was prompted by the state legislature's passage of act twenty-nineteen dash three-nine-six, which requires the state's two-year and four-year colleges and universities to protect and uphold the free speech rights of students, faculty and staff. Under the new law, the board is required to have a policy in place consistent with the law. By January first, twenty-twenty-one, the proposed policy was drafted by a committee made up of ACCS staff, college presidents and myself, and has been reviewed by the board's policy committee. Much of the proposed policy is pulled directly from the new law. It provides system institutions with the flexibility to craft policies to ensure that the outdoor areas of their campuses are open to members of the cu- campus community to engage in First Amendment protected activity while ensuring that these activities don't disrupt the functioning of the colleges. And um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anything from Ms. Hart?
Mr. Thompson, this is Roger. I may just one comment on this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, at, at, at the risk of sounding too uh proud uh of, of my own lawyers, uh Christine Hart, uh, she, just so y'all know, she is a First Amendment uh expert in our shop. And when we got involved in this project, it's the Alabama legislative process. Uh, she went with Boone to all those meetings uh with all these people who think they know lots and lots of things about this. But we have, we, we owe her a debt of gratitude that she's been involved in this. Uh, because we had at our fingertips an expert who could advise us through this. And I think Boone would echo my thoughts on this, that without her involvement, we would, we would have been somewhat lost. Because I will tell you, this is not my field of expertise. And I needed her and this board has been greatly served by that. And I just wanted y'all to be aware of what you had at your disposal to help guide you for this policy. So my apologies for tooting our horn a little, but I wanted you to be aware of, of just what you had available to you.
Thank you. It helps, it helps us to appreciate that. Roger, thank you. Anything from the board on this item five? If not, six-oh-five-point-oh-two.
Well, Roger, would you like to address that one?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that on. Uh, as we discussed in uh one of our uh information sessions uh several weeks ago, uh, this policy is in response uh to need to have this board for the first time actually adopt its own uh faculty qualifications policy. Uh, it also contains an effort to clarify definitions in groups for those credentialing purposes that are assigned to uh employees that will be new hires. It is important to note from section two that this policy will not involve any changes for any employee uh today. Uh, it's already in our employment and, and in our institution. They are all grandfathered in at their current rank and group placements. The other uh point of notification here too is to realize that the various ranks and classifications that follow in this some twenty-plus-page document. Uh, we did not alter or change any of the degree requirements, the infield requirements or the work requirements that go with any of these particular rankings. They're all exactly the same. Um, from the previous credentialing policy that was in place under State Board of Education. Um, so with the clarification language to address some of the issues that we had in recent litigation, we've made some slight changes to the definitions in section one-point-one, one-point-two and one-point-three of those group definitions. But in all material respects, the remaining policy uh is brought forward from the old state board policy. And I think we all know that we're in the process right now of completing a compensation study. And if and when that project gets completed and we have new information, we may have to revisit the quality of this credentialing policy. But this should serve our needs and our purposes for, for the current period. Thank you.
Anything, questions from the board on this item?
Do we have a timeline on that compensation schedule? When that study's gonna be completed?
Yes, um, we are about
Yes, we are about halfway through. This was originally slated to be a two-year process, so we expect to start bringing some recommendations to the board late spring 2021.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, thank you, Roger, Christine and staff. We appreciate the time spent walking us through and answering all of our questions as a policy committee, so thank you, Susan and Matt, as well, for the time that you've invested in this.
Anything else on this item from the board? Any questions, comments? Okay, move on to academic and student affairs. Is there anyone to speak on the recommendation for the associate degree at Calhoun?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Donna Estle from Calhoun is supposed to be on the line.
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. We are asking for two degrees. We have an AAS in criminal justice that comes from our advisory board made up of our local police officers and they have, right now, we offer an AS concentration, but it does not say criminal justice because it is a general studies AS degree. They cannot employ our students easily without that criminal justice degree. In addition, they also would like to have a heavier concentration of criminal justice courses in their program, in the program. And so while we're offering a lot of these already, we have not done a full degree in that, so we would like to do an AAS degree in criminal justice that allows our students to graduate from Calhoun and go immediately into the workforce in most of our local police departments. And then it also allows them to work if they want to continue on with a bachelor's degree because a lot of the police programs would like to eventually have them have a bachelor's degree. It also allows them to continue on to that bachelor's degree. And then our second degree is in multimedia production technology, which is behind the scenes camera work for radio, television, video. And that program comes out of a lot of demand from our students. Actually, we, we've looked to industry because they do, they do use a lot of radio video people within corporations. They, pretty much somebody who goes into the field of visual communications has to be able to do a wide variety of things and one of those is video. But also our film and television industries are looking to frequently to come to Alabama and right now we don't have a strong program to develop that workforce in the community college system. And so we are, we're trying to build that film and video technology program at Calhoun for the technical side of film and video technology. And I would welcome any questions about either one of those.
Okay, in regards to the criminal justice program, do we need more stringent courses? Are the courses that we have adequate? I know one of the letters referenced courses with more weight in regards to criminal justice. Can you expand on that?
Yes, sir. What, what they were asking for was specifically a larger number of courses. The AS program allows for about four courses in criminal justice, which was not enough for them going into the field. There were some specific courses that they really needed to have and our AAS program would incorporate those courses.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Ms. Estle.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Certainly. Item 9, the request from Jefferson State on the histologic technician program.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Candace Hill from Jefferson State should be on the line. Ms. Hill?
I can come back to this, David, if.
Asher, do we have Ms. Hill?
I do not see her in the attendees list.
Okay.
Let's move on to the Enterprise State items, please.
All right, sir. We should have Mr. Danny Long, Mr. Dean of Instruction. Paul?
Yeah, good morning. I'm on the call, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Enterprise State Community College has two programs that we would like to discuss this morning and thank you, board and Chancellor Baker for allowing this opportunity. This is an exciting day for our college, but Enterprise State Community College is one of only a few community colleges in our state not to offer a nursing program. Today, we'd like to take the first, that next step in expanding our health science offerings. We're all aware of the nursing shortages in our state and more specifically in our long-term care facilities. Enterprise City was named a site for a new veterans home that is scheduled to open in 2022. We feel like this is a necessary step in assisting that new facility, but also our current facilities with LPNs needed to provide patient care. Our college has received tremendous support from our community and local health providers in expanding our health science programs. We have recently started our medical assisting program. We have returned our associate degree in paramedics and the certificate in LPN is the next step in supporting the health providers in our community. Today, we're presenting the LPN certificate, however, initially we'll provide coursework that will allow a bridge between medical assisting and LPN with a two-course sequence. This will provide some financial relief to the college as we're just in the initial phases of standing up a nursing program and it'll provide opportunities to share resources between our medical assisting program and the new LPN program. This new option was made possible with the work that Kenneth Kirkland has done with the Alabama State Board of Nursing and I certainly want to thank Kenneth for his support of our college and his advocacy. If Kenneth is on the call, I'd like for him to, to address the work that he's done with the Board of Nursing to make this a possibility. Kenneth, are you on the call?
Yes, sir, I am. Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's, it's my pleasure to be able to assist Vice President Long and the great folks down at Enterprise State today to kind of echo what Dean Long had said. This is a historic day for them because among the 24 institutions, they may, they are one of the few remaining institutions that can say they are starting a nursing program from the ground up. And so the proposal that Dean Long is referencing was recently submitted to the Alabama Board of Nursing for their September board meeting. This was a unique way to create a bridge program. You may be familiar with bridge programs for registered nurses where paramedics or LPNs can bridge into that program. We created a proposal for the board to consider paramedics and medical assistants to be able to bridge into the last semester of LPN programs. And as we've mentioned before in previous meetings, LPN workforce in the state of Alabama is a critical need and despite the great job our programs are doing across the state, that gap is going to only continue to get wider. And so creating unique pathways like what they are referencing is going to be able to help accomplish that goal. And so this will help in establishing not only the LPN program down at Enterprise, but will also give them a great footing and a pipeline for other allied health programs to bridge into that LPN program as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth, and if anyone has any questions, I'll take those now on our LPN program.
Vice President Long, I have a question, I have some comments on the veterans home that was awarded to the city of Enterprise. That was not just awarded to the city of Enterprise, that was an intense competition presented to the Department of Veterans Affairs and with the help of President Rogers, Vice President Long, and the support of Wallace Doughton, Enterprise was awarded that very important, very, very big veterans home for this area, but it couldn't have been done without the help of those two schools. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll, I'll discuss the second program and that is an Associate of Applied Science and Advanced Composites. This project, pending your approval and AIC approval, will be made possible through a grant funded through the Institute for Advanced Composites Manufacturing Innovation. The grant will support the faculty salary for the first three years of the program and include faculty training, curriculum development and limited consumables. The organization is specifically interested in institutions that support the Department of Defense manufacturers. Enterprise State Community College is one of three national sites selected to replicate an advanced composites program that is currently being implemented at Davis Technical College in Utah. Enterprise State renovated our composites lab that's used for aviation maintenance a couple of years ago, so we have one of the, the most, one of the most state-of-the-art composites facilities probably in the region. This AAS is, is designed and will prepare individuals to apply basic engineering principles and technical skills in support of engineers and other professionals engaged in the development, manufacturing and use of composite materials and aircraft technology, automotive technology, boats, medical prostheses and wind turbines. The instruction will complete, will include computer aided design and drafting, composite materials and processes, composite maintenance, composite manufacturing, composite repair, material science and mold manufacturing and production. Similar to our, our Mechatronics program that is in year two, we will utilize a hybrid flexible model that primarily uses digital instruction for lecture and initial instruction and that'll be paired with flexible lab times to accommodate the employed student, but also that dual enrollment student. This delivery model has been extremely successful with our Mechatronics program and these programs can be expensive and when you start having to duplicate labs and, and equipment, it, it certainly can be cost prohibitive. So allowing students to schedule multiple times during the day to access the labs is certainly been great for our Mechatronics program and we will utilize that same delivery model for this program. Students will have the opportunity to earn the American Composites Manufacturing Association Certified Composites Technician credential. And according to MC, there are projected to be about 26 annual job openings annually in almost 2,000 statewide and to my knowledge, we'd be the only community college in the state that was providing a degree in composites. This has certainly been an exciting program and like other projects, got delayed because of COVID, but this has been a collaborative effort with experts from all over the country. It's been great to get to know the, the instructors in Utah and, and organize, and the members of the organization that issued the grant. And they were certainly, you know, part of the reason we were selected was because our relationship with Fort Rucker, but also the fact that we've already got that advanced composites lab that is embedded in our aviation maintenance program in Ozark. So this time I will take any questions about our advanced composites program.
I think it's a, a great program and I didn't want to go back to the nursing program. I did not see any letters of, from the community or from the businesses there in support. I know, you know, based on what you said, you need it, but typically we'll have some letters of recommendation and support of added programs.
There were several there, Milton.
Okay, maybe I just didn't print it out, sorry.
Send a separate email, Milton.
Ah, okay. Thanks.
I'm attempting to see if Ms. Hill can talk right now.
We heard her earlier, but she's on mute right now. I see her.
Ms. Hill, you might be able to hit star six and that should unmute you.
Hey, if she's, if she's not, then Kenneth Kirkland, can he report on that, please? If Ms. Hill is not available or can't get.
Yes, sir. Good morning again. It's my pleasure to, to do a brief review on the histotechnician program or Associate of Applied Science. As, as discussed in the, in the board's packet, this program does prepare graduates with an associate degree for preparation as a histotechnician and a histotechnician is, is a specialist subset of a medical lab technician that specializes in tissue sampling and also advanced tissue analysis. And so as you can see, the, the numbers do represent good fiscal support for this program. Student enrollment and attrition is comparable to other programs across the country and I am excited for Jeff State. This will be the first histotechnician program in the state of Alabama and is much needed in the medical community because a lot of what we know on current viruses and, and a lot of medicine is based off of advanced tissue analysis. So these, these specialists are much needed in the workforce. They are pursuing programmatic accreditation through NACLES, their accrediting body, and so that is always something that we're pleased to see as well. Be more than glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Okay, we'll move back in sequence. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, sir. The next item is Coastal Alabama's request for approval of an additional instructional site in Foley, Alabama. The site would be located in the Baldwin Center for Business Development in Foley. That is a unique facility in that it also houses two chambers of commerce, the Regional Workforce Council, ATN and Coastal Alabama. The, the college would lease approximately 4,600 feet in the business development building itself with an additional 2,300 square feet of space in an adjoining warehouse to serve as a technical course lab for the college. The college has for a number of years had programs in Foley for adult education and English as a second language. The adult education was being held in a modular classroom at a local high school. The English as a second language program was being conducted in a back room at a local church. Those programs have been moved to the leased area in the Business Development Center there, there in Foley. There were, there were a number of questions raised in the course of the telephone calls earlier, or actually last week, and I'll attempt to address some of those this morning. I also have standing by, I believe, Dr. Joel Duplantis. Dr. Joel Duplantis, who is the Dean of Workforce Development at Coastal Alabama. But one of the questions that was raised was whether the college was going to have to put out a capital outlay for this space to be occupied to start classes. The answer to that question is no. The monthly rent, $5,800, covers all power, water, and sewer, and the space was suitable to set up as a classroom using computers and other equipment that were being used in connection with the adult education program and the English as a Second Language program. Those were simply moved to the new space. In addition, fiscal year 20 adult education funds were also used to purchase two rolling smart boards for the facility, along with other relevant materials and supplies necessary to provide services at the facility. In addition, the college was awarded $28,000 in ICI workforce grants to have a fully functional warehouse space that includes the necessary tools to teach the NCCER construction certification courses. Also, extra electrical trainers were brought in from other campuses of the college to the warehouse site. A question was asked regarding the revenue anticipated to be generated from the offerings at this site. In the short term, it is the college's, colleges believe that non-credit offerings will generate approximately $25,000 per year. On the credit side, the college estimates that approximately $80,000 in revenue will be generated on an annual basis in the short term. However, it is anticipated that additional course offerings will be approved to start in, in fall 2021, which will increase enrollment with a co-commitment increase in revenues. The site was selected based on several data points. The first was the percentage of adults in South Baldwin County without a high school degree. It is estimated that there are 3,700 potential participants in G or GED and adult education within a 10-mile radius of this site. The second factor that was looked at was that the demand for ESL is very high in the South Baldwin County market due to a large concentration of service and construction-related jobs. Next, Foley High School has the largest percentage of high school graduates in Baldwin County that do not pursue a four-year degree, creating a population of prospective students for technical training at the new facility. And finally, there is a substantial demand for skilled workers to meet the needs of business and industry in South Baldwin County. The Foley instructional site places the college in a prime location to attract students and provide the training to meet these needs. Dr. Duplantis, if you are on the line, if you would like to add anything. Apparently, he's not with us. Mr. Thompson, that is, that is the presentation with regard to this new proposed instructions.
Chairman, can you hear me?
We can now.
Chairman, Thompson, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes. Go ahead, Josh.
Sorry about that. Now I can't hear you.
Okay. We can hear you. I put a sign.
All right. Well, I'm gonna assume you, I'm gonna assume you hear me, Chairman. All right. A good head and hide. Chairman, thanks for being here and board. Thanks for the opportunity. I'd echo what David said. I think I've been aboard since around February 1. And of course, one of the largest population centers in our service area is 20, 20 miles surrounding Foley, Alabama. And, and of course, because of the data points presented, we wanted to really increase the capacity of our services as well as facilities, which led us to the Baldwin Center in partnership with, again, two, two chambers of commerce and services being provided by several other workforce entities. And so we've, we've seen some increase in ESL training even in the midst of COVID. And we have launched a couple of technical classes under SACS notification, which is 49% or less. We got that notification four days before the semester started. And so we kind of eke by with at least establishing a footprint. But, you know, again, for the most populous area of our, of our territory, and as you guys know, coastal serves a large geographic area, this was one area that was severely underserved. And so we look forward to continuing to increase capacity and enrollment in not just non-credit, but also growing the credit side in Foley. So appreciate your consideration.
Josh, are you able to hear us yet? Asher, I don't know if you can work on his audio.
I mean, I allowed him to speak, but I can't really control like, sorry.
Al, where, Al, where is this location? Where's the location?
Chuck, Chuck, this is just a, I don't know, not even a tenth of a mile off of 59. It's, it's north of Foley. If you know, there's a, this is in the Riviera, Riviera Utilities offices.
Okay.
Same building. It's, it's, it's on Underwood Road.
Okay.
I think it's kind of behind the Waterfront Rescue Mission thrift shop, which is a, really a, a nice store, but that, that would be a landmark. And I, I can't remember exactly what's around there. But great facility, great opportunity. When I first saw this on the work session agenda, I, I said, you know.
There we go.
It, it's much needed. It's way past due. And a, a great move getting this done, also coordinating with the, with the two chambers. But Josh, can Josh hear us now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
So I didn't miss that leading up to this, but I can now.
Okay. Chuck, Smith trustee was asking the location, and I was just going over that. And I, I will share with the board, I, I received an invitation from a chamber director to do a walkthrough of the facility, which I did yesterday. And it, I, I think it's, it's a good space for the classrooms. Josh, one thing, one question I would have, and you don't, you don't have the answer now, you can get back to us on it, would be, and I'm assuming we, this is all owned by Riviera Utilities and that we're, they are the, the less, lessor. And I, that warehouse facility is in need of some, I, I think some upgrades and, you know, I, I don't know if they just threw that in with the 4,600 square feet of heated and cooled in the main building that it's not part of the main building. And, you know, it's just, it's a little on the rough side. And I didn't know if that was something they just threw in or, or what were the circumstances with that. And I think, I guess we've got a one-year lease is my understanding on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I can't answer that question, Chairman. You know, that, that it was a little better shape before Hurricane Sally. Actually, we, we do have some door issues. We have requested that to be fixed, and, and they have received that request. It, that falls on me for not being a little more aggressive with that repair. It is a utilities company that's been out and about all across the Gulf Coast here in the last few weeks. And so that, that is their responsibility, and they have acknowledged the situation and a couple of the things. So most of what you saw is a result of Hurricane Sally blew up, really an unidentified object into that doorway and caused damage. But they are aware. And before we, you know, put any more tools in there over the next couple of weeks, that will be fixed to be adequate for us.
That, and if there's, if it's possible, I don't know if the classes need more privacy. There's, you know, it's partitioned off from a remainder of the really large warehouse. And that's all y'all's deal. But I, I know you just want the best instructional environment for the, for those technical classes in there. And, but, but anyway, this is a really excellent opportunity. I applaud Josh and Dr. Pouncy for seizing this and creating these partnerships with, with the South Baldwin Chamber and Central Baldwin Chamber. It, it's, it's, it's got great potential. One thing, one other observation I'd have is if we could get some visibility there, you know, it'd be nice for the, for, for what our investment is. I don't know if that's possible, if they let us have anything on the road that, for, whether it be signage or something like that, because that's a big part of, you know, letting people know you're going to have great connections with the high school and with the Gateway Initiative helping you facilitate this. But I don't know, just whatever visibility you could gain from, from our investment there would be great, too. So.
Yes, sir. We'll do it.
May have some other questions that come up. But anyway, my congratulations on doing this and getting it executed. And just, I, I think the possibilities are exciting.
Yes, sir, they are. Thank you.
Yeah, this is great. And based on the fiscal consideration, I would think they would include the signage, and we shouldn't be responsible for any build-out costs. And again, I think it's a great location and should serve that area very well.
Yeah. You got any thoughts? You're, you're muted.
After being down here for over two months trying to find skill labor, it's making bad. And I'm gonna be here a while longer. I wish I could speak Spanish.
You see, your mother told you you should have taken that class in high school.
Yes, indeed.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Duplantis. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The last, the last item on the work session agenda is Wallace State Community College Selma's request for approval of renovations to the Demopolis Armory. And I believe Ed Lottley is on the line to address this item.
Yes, sir. Good morning again. Asher, if you would, please, when you pull the PowerPoint presentation and get to the third slide, please. Earlier this year, the community college system purchased from the National Guard Bureau an armory building in Demopolis. Since late spring, we have been designing an interior renovation to this building. And once complete, the design for the renovated building will include lab and classroom space for a variety of programs for Wallace Selma. These programs include nursing, truck driving, welding, HVAC, industrial maintenance, machine tool, and others. And next slide, please. If you're familiar with the, the Demopolis area, we're located southeast of town. One more, please. And this is the building in question there on Highway 43. Next slide, please. The total project budget for this project is a total of $2 million, which we anticipate coming from Wallace Community College Selma funds. Approximately 1.5 million of this will go to the construction contract with the balance, go into furnishings, design, contingency, and other miscellaneous fees. The architect of this project is J. Mark Los Angeles here in Montgomery. The schedule for this project, we plan to bid it in early January, hopefully in time to present this project for approval at the January board meeting. Assuming it all goes well, we will start construction immediately thereafter with the goal to complete construction in late 2021. I will be happy to answer any questions that the board might have about this project.
Hey, Ed.
Yes, sir.
Please find a name besides armory. I think of troops marching and guns and tanks. I'd really like to see something besides armory.
We will, we will find a more appropriate name for it.
I know Dr. Mitchell is on the phone, on the line, so y'all, y'all do something with that.
That is my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Mr. O'Brien, is there anything else come before the board on the work set today, work session?
No, sir.
Asher, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Board? I, I just want to thank the board for their participation and engagement in so many issues that are, that are coming before us right now. I, I just think that your, your attitude and your willingness to, to take the time, the committee chairs, the committee members with these issues that come up, it, it's appreciated. And it's, it's all for the good. And the chancellor's leadership has been exceptional under these difficult circumstances. His staff's willingness to step up, and as the chancellor said, work hard and work go above and beyond. I know that's going on, and I have, I probably have no real concept of what's involved, but just know that, that it's appreciated to everyone. I don't have any other comments with this. And seeing them, we will, there's nothing else from the board members. We will stand adjourned. Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.